We got five thirty. Game for the pledge. What?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roca? Oh, Craig Scott.
There.
Mark Serber. Charles Wiltsy.
There.
Andrew Mahieu.
Yes.
Danny David.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I have me, uh, make a motion to. For.
Motion from Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Wiltsy, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, any declarations of conflicts of interest, Commissioners?
No, no.
We do admit by tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept them as.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item four B, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, Committee of the Hole, meaning minutes.
Motion to accept them.
Motion from Commissioner Scott.
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, public comment and agenda item matters only, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six, correspondence from Holton County related to opposition to proposed cuts to Medicaid that has been received and filed. Um, item seven, we only have one, uh, one item on the agenda, so there's no consent there. This resolution, um, is sponsored by Treasurer Karen Peglowski, on June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty-five dash six-two to adopt an automated clearinghouse and electronic funds transfer policy, including an ACH EFT vendor list. Approval of the resolution will amend the vendor list to include all paid and pay gov.us.
Motion complete. Fully resolution.
Motion from Commissioner Serbrook.
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltsy, further discussion? I watched the meeting and Tim explained it, so. And you said there'd be more to come?
Oh, yeah. You know, just the audition.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item eight, claims, uh, claims were a total of three hundred and sixty-seven dollars, three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, ten dollars and seventy cents.
I'll make a motion to, uh, uh, approve the claims.
Motion Commissioner Scott, I'll support that because Commissioner Scott and I reviewed claims, Commissioner Scott, you want to take the force?
Uh, lots, a lot of the ordinary stuff, I see central services for the circuit court, we had to pay two quarters this time around. Um, so that, that was a sizable amount, uh, um, building, building, our housing, I should say, not building, but housing department had some contract costs and things like that. Um, I didn't see anything that was, uh, blaring, a matter of fact, there was a lot of empty files. A lot of empty files, so I don't know what cycle we're on there, but but I didn't see anything on.
I just wrote down a few things, uh, MAC dues were eight thousand dollars for the year, that wasn't their commissioners. Uh, Roscommon County Shared Services, I, that's a three month that we share, uh, the judge, the, uh, one position there was eighteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Um, I was just like, that was a breakdown that I had asked you questions about as far as mileage, if we were still paying and, and I, that wasn't there this time, so three hundred and fifty bucks a month in mileage for that position, um, insurance, bonds, hundred and thirteen thousand Mesa was in there.
That's true Mesa was.
Hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, uh, inmate housing seventeen thousand to Gladwin, Claire was sixty-one hundred medical, which wasn't bad, uh, five thousand, sixty-four dollars, I think we had a medical examiner in there as well.
Yes, and that was not far out of line, and I, I looked over the report.
No, there's gonna be some autopsies on the next one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, there's only five thousand.
None of your faith.
I see only five thousand, sixty-four dollars on there, so.
Okay.
That was a good for medical cost, but anyways, I agree, there wasn't a whole lot abnormal. Any questions, comments?
Um, I'd like to thank Commissioner Scott for helping me out this week again, thank you.
That was pretty quick. Going through my.
Yeah, it did, like I said, there was a lot of empty files and stuff, but I agree with you on the claims.
Roca, look. Uh, Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Andrew Mahieu.
Yes.
Charles Wiltsy.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Item nine, unfinished business fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, elected officials pay rate, pay rates. Where are we at, Tim?
Okay, promised. I, I did put together, um, sheet for you to look at, and this is the one with the bar graph on it. I'm actually gonna work on the opposite side of it where the numbers are, and I'll explain the bar graph in a second, but it's just these numbers put at that type of a format. We, when looking at the wages of our elected officials, well, first of all, this, one of the things that makes this very easy is that a treasurer, pick on Karen because she's here, a treasurer in Ogumaw County has the same statutory responsibilities as a treasurer in any other county in the state. Uh, the, the workload might be different, so Wayne County, Oakland County, those treasurers may have far more work tasks by day, but they are all governed by the same statute, so in effect, we have one-to-one comparisons with most of our elected officials, now occasionally you get a county that makes an additional assignment, to say a prosecutor who might be acting as a corporation counsel for the county as well, they may receive extra for that, but other than those minor nuances here and there, they're, they're pretty well the same. How do we know if we're in the market, if you will, if our, our wages are in the market, well, we've gotten to narrow down these counties to the ones that are most comparable, and to do that, I used the Michigan Association of County Treasurers' Elected Official Wage Survey, their most recent one that was published for twenty twenty-four, that actually had data going all the way back to twenty twenty for each of the elected offices uh, across the state, now some counties didn't report, and that's to be expected, but most of them did. Using three different criteria, in those criteria being the population of the county, the taxable value of the county, and then the general fund revenue for each county's general fund budget. I was able to identify counties that I would call the most comparable to Ogumaw. The first group of counties, sixteen counties, and you can see on this list which of those sixteen they were, matched on at least one of those criteria. The second group, the eight most comparable, matched on at least two criteria uh, of, of the group that I had mentioned before, and then finally, that last group are the counties that border Ogumaw, so in that case, Aaronack, Isco, Gladwin, Ascoda, and, sorry, is that right, yeah, Ascoda and Roscommon. On the, each one of these graphs, you'll see a low, so which county was paying the least? You had the median, it's the middle number, and then which county was paying the, the highest? These are median numbers, they're not the average, medium being the middle number, which gives us a better idea or better breakdown, and that's done for each of these groups. And then I randomly selected the seventy-fifth percentile, so that's to say, if we wanted to be, um, uh, county that wasn't the highest paying county, but one that was at least within the market range, that seventy-fifth percentile, I think, puts us right in the middle of that, so it's between half and a hundred percent, uh, gives us the number to work with, now. Tell you before we go any farther, you're not being asked to do anything tonight, this is an example, expect there's gonna be conversation back and forth about where we finally end up landing. For me, the general rule, if I want to be right in the middle of the market, that seventy-fifth percent works. As a board, you might not want to be there, you might want to be on the eighty-fifth, or you might want to be on the sixtieth, or whatever, that's all up to the sake. But for the sake of that conversation tonight, the next table below would show the proposed compensation rates at that seventy-fifth percentile, and again, you have listed for each of our elected positions, current salary, what that seventy-fifth percentile average would be, and in this case, would break down increases over a two-year period, instead of trying to catch all that up at once. And as I said, these are examples, this is where I would land if I was just doing a simple study and, and making a proposal, you're being hit cold with this, so I would expect probably you're gonna want to think about this uh, over the next few weeks and, and decide if, if this is even a direction you want to go. A couple of rules in this proposal table, this will maintain our clerk registry deeds and treasury at the equal compensation rates that we have now. So if one goes up, they all go up, they maintain that same, um, number, that same rate. It's actually done with a lot of counties, that's not just an Ogumaw thing, I would say at least half of these counties I looked at do the same thing with those three positions. And, uh, you might recall, I think it was last year in that budget cycle, when we talked about, uh, the resolution for the elected official wages, we did get a legal opinion telling us that our chief deputies, our undersheriff, and our assistant prosecuting attorney, the way our attorneys read the statute would also be grouped into that same rule that says you can set their rates, uh, at the beginning of the term, you can never go under, never decrease those rates during the term of office. Uh, I've just included them in here for the sake of argument again, and what, this rule here would just maintain the same pay differential that we have right now, uh, for each of those seconding commands for those different departments. Uh, again, I, I just want to emphasize that the numbers here are just strictly what the medians and, and the, uh, seventy-fifth percentile, uh, told us they would be, but you can see we are you know, a little more out of sync with some counties than others, I'll point out that on the five bordering counties consistently, uh, Skoda County paid the lowest, and Isco County paid the highest in every position. Uh, so that left the other three that were, uh, scrambling there in the middle. On the other side of this page, I'm, uh, I can comprehend something if I can see it visually, and this is, this will really help, we need the blue line on the left for each of these positions is our current pay rate. The orange line would be the, um, representing the sixteen most comparable counties, gray line, the eight most comparable, and then that gold line at the very end would be our neighboring counties, that red line is the composite average, so that's the number that's on that seventy-fifth percentile on the other page, so you can see where they fall. Uh, and again, it sort of meant the goal of putting us somewhere in the middle of where those comparable counties were. Uh, I would also point out that something that you'll want to take into consideration is just circling the drain commissioner. Those wages were all over the place, uh, not just with these counties, but across the state, and that's because some counties, uh, the drain commissioner does an awful lot of work. Commissioner Wiltsy and I were talking about the drain commissioner in Agam County, you know, active that county is, hundreds of drains, and they have a large staff, very large budget throughout the year. But then we have other counties like Lelandaw that had, when I was there, had one drain. And that drain was pretty much a natural drain, there wasn't a whole lot of maintenance that had to happen. Uh, so that county would pay considerably less, obviously, than a county with a lot of drains. That's the one position that had the most variance, uh, between, uh, the various counties. Uh, the others, they were, they pretty well grouped, uh, well, you can see on the graphic where they, where they grouped. So, I did say, we'll put that in front of you tonight, I can certainly field any questions, I would encourage you to take this over the next few weeks and really digest it. Uh, we're gonna do anything with wages, we will want to make a decision, uh, by the time we do the budget, uh, but this gives you a, a starting point anyway, and some reference. Uh, if you want some additional calculations done, if you wanted to know what, say, the sixtieth percentile looked like, it's pretty easy for me to do now, all the data is lined up, I just need to do the arithmetic and, and produce that for you pretty quickly.
We appreciate the information and the graphs and the comparisons, I, I personally like to take some time and, and look at this before I make any official decisions, Commissioner Scott.
Well, I'm, yeah, I agree, same thing.
Which, oh, sorry.
Nope.
Commissioner Wiltsy?
Um, this morning we had our, um, budget meetings, and, uh, Tim went over this in depth with everyone there, it was, you know, pretty eye-opening to see this. Now, we definitely know that the hard decisions we've made over the last few years, we're finally reaching some sustain, financial sustainability for the county, we've had a lot of our people hang tight with us when they knew that their pay was lower than the, you know, borders around us, um, so this is something that we have to look at closely, and, uh, I know for sure we've got a lot of very strong stakeholders that are working really hard and they've never given up, so we gotta make sure that they're taken care of.
Mr. Mahieu.
It's all interesting, and my thinking is, is we need to see where we're at next year, at this time. I know we got fund balance and all this stuff, and all this is coming, but it ain't here yet.
Commissioner Serbrook.
Do I hold on ten ways? Would it take you to do seventieth, sixty-fifth, and the sixtieth percentile?
Not long at all.
I mean, if it's not gonna take, if it's not gonna be. I'd like to see that spread sixty to seventy-five, personally, just.
Can we, can we? Can we put this specific on, on the next committee of the hole? I, this definitely deserves some, uh, more discussion. Pretty in-depth discussion, I mean, these obviously were on the low end, that's not okay, I agree with that, I'm definitely in favor of some raises, just what exactly? Uh, I want to look a little, little, uh, closer at that, so. And then you, um, you want to review this too, the various fund balances?
Yeah, and it seemed promised from the last meeting that I would produce this, uh, to show you where the fund balances were, and what the trends look like for each of the funds, you want to see this about the very first line, the one-on-one, the general fund? You see in two thousand and one, it looked like we had, uh, you know, pretty decent fund balance, but looking back at that audit, it reminded me, that was our first year of ARPA uh, that had come through toward the end of oh-one, and we got our first ARPA installment then, and we were able to apply that back to two thousand and one, but if not for the five hundred thousand dollar gotten the arm from the ARPA money, you can see that this would have probably been a, uh, would definitely have been a negative number. Uh, I'm sure that the auditors would have moved some funds around to bring that to zero.
Yeah, aren't, aren't these numbers?
Twenty twenty-one, right?
Should, should that be twenty twenty?
Okay.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty.
Know what I meant.
That's okay.
Well.
At the top.
All right, a long time ago, it's not.
Wow.
So it's.
I've been having trouble with that, this whole cycle for some reason, I don't know. Anyway, yes, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, okay? So, um, that, that's the, the asterisk on that, now, purpose of putting this in front of you is as we get through, um, moving through the budgets for those special funds, uh, it's healthy to ask ourselves, are these fund balances where they need to be, now, remember the rule of thumb from the Government Finance Officers Association is to have what works out to about, uh, just, just under seventeen percent fund balance, uh, two months worth of dollars set to work with, as a rule of thumb. Some funds are gonna really need more than that, because you don't know what you're gonna hit with, and you want to be prepared, other funds maybe don't need as much. Just a few I want to point out to you to flag, uh, first one would be two fifteen, the friend of the court. The fund balancing, you know, you're showing here, recall that, uh, several of these, friend of the court, childcare, uh, in particular, uh, can name a couple of them, you get allocations from the general fund, and they're not small. Uh, you go back into your, the very last page of that budget spreadsheet, and you can see where those, um, uh, funding allocations are. Um, friend of the court, I had no fund balance in twenty twenty, uh, in twenty twenty-four, you see that fund balance was at a hundred twelve thousand, four thirty-nine, or roughly twenty-eight point three percent. Uh, we do have Judge Williams invited to come to the next, uh, committee of the hole, along with, uh, a friend of the court to talk about that and, and discuss what a comfortable number would be. If that number were, uh, reduced, uh, if we were to say, just as an example, instead of one twelve, if that's seventy-five thousand, that would be plenty, this fund balance could be used the next fiscal year to offset some of that allocation from the general fund. I'm just using it as an example, I'm not saying that that's, that one twelve is too high, but just as an example, that's why this conversation becomes important. Uh, jumping down to two ninety-two, the childcare fund, and this is one that's notoriously difficult to predict. Surprisingly, in twenty twenty, we had a fund balance at just one point three percent childcare, and I know, uh, just in my conversations with Michael since I've been here, that obviously was not a number that we could sustain, and you can see we immediately in twenty twenty-one, that fund balance jumped up uh, to four hundred and three thousand, six thirty-seven, we are at right now, four seventy-nine oh forty-two, which is a seventy percent fund balance. As you know, and as Judge Williams and, uh, can point out to you when he's here, uh, at the next committee of the hole, having a single placement of, uh, juvenile could eat that up in a single year. So that's one that we'll want to be very aware of, while the number might look high, uh, it might be, um, one that, uh, we're still maybe a little uncomfortable with. Just above that, you can see that opioid settlement at ten thousand, six hundred and seventy-three percent, that's over a million dollars there now, I expect that that will be uh, reduced, uh, more, but recall that that particular, uh, settlement, that whole category has about an eighteen-year life on it, so a lot of funding coming in on the front end, but will be dispersed over many years. But jumping down next to the building inspections department toward the bottom, five forty-nine, fund balance right there of three hundred and forty-five thousand, three fifty-one, a hundred and thirty-six point eight percent at the end of the last fiscal year. We were talking about this a little bit at a budget meeting this morning, um, there was, you know, pretty well consensus around the table, our fees aren't too high, they're in line with what other counties are charging, but we just apparently have had more activity. The other side of this coin is, this is a fund that, or a department that is truly self-sustaining, the only revenue they receive is what they receive from those permanent revenues. If, say, in twenty twenty-six, that, uh, building construction really fell off, it would be good to have that fund balance there, to not have to lay off our building inspectors or drastically change how that office operates. Uh, at the same time, I can't say this, this office does contribute to the cost of the reception secretary over in that building. Um, but through our cost allocation plan, we know that there are other departments that have costs related to building inspections department, for instance, our treasurer's office maintains the books, uh, on BSNA, and they've calculated it with an independent view how much the general fund is really contributing for that service, so it might be time to take a look at some of those costs. And I was talking to Commissioner Scott earlier, uh, in the week, it's been a long time since we've looked at the cost of that building, and how that's allocated, so the rent that we charge, maybe that needs another look too, so those are other things that we'll take a look at over the coming weeks, and you can talk that through, maybe you want to make changes, maybe not, but this is healthy conversation uh, across the board, and this is the one time of the year that we get a good bite of that apple, so this would be a, a time to look at those, so you have all of these, you're seeing that twenty twenty-four actual, as reported in the audit, we can do some projections now that we're in actually the fourth quarter of the current year of where we think those are gonna land at the end of twenty twenty-five, and then you have a really good, uh, idea of where these fund balances stand. That's the nickel tour on these.
By looking at this, is there anybody else that you guys, uh, would like to come to the committee of the hole to further discuss this information that, uh, Tim just gave us? I would like to see if Brian could come. Cause just to discuss that.
When it's time?
Yeah, that's fun balance, that's a big fun balance, and he does contribute whenever we've asked, absolutely, I just like, would like to hear his his input on it.
Question. Another point that was made at the budget committee meeting this morning, which was very good point, uh, was we purchased two, uh, pickup trucks for that department here a few years ago. Uh, the thinking was that perhaps some of that should be reserved for replacement of those vehicles when the time comes, rather than scrambling at the last minute when, uh, uh, one or both of them start to falter, now, they're relatively new, you're not gonna need to do any purchase like that probably for a few years, uh, at least, but it's good if we have a fund balance like that to reserve some funding for expense you know is gonna come.
Mr. Wiltsy?
Um, who do we have on the list, I know we've got sheriff department, um, I know we have, uh, the courts. Who else is on there, you, I know you just asked for building department, do we have anybody else that we've asked for that meeting?
That's who I remember.
Just, yeah, probate, probate. Sheriff department. Building, yeah.
It's not really anything else that's really sticking out to me.
Not right now, we got another meeting in August. If something's come jumping out, we can always, then.
I'd like to take some time and go, go over this, so. Anything else on this? Go ahead.
So they, those, I mean, these are older deals, but how many of these fund balances are, we're not gonna be able to touch?
There are a few of them, for instance, um, let's see if I can find one, the, uh, EDC Alliance, two forty-five.
Opioid settlement.
Treasurer has an awful lot more information about how this was formed than I do, but this is funds that are specifically set aside for that alliance and are not available to us.
That's what I'm saying. It's another one. A lot of sense of wasting time and stuff that we can't.
Exactly.
Can't touch.
Right, right.
Is there anything else on there that you're, EDC, the county parks? Housing program, that's, all that's pretty much that.
They are, housing programs, another one, we don't, uh,
Correct.
Have any.
Correction, officers training.
That's very specific.
I mean, we, we don't have as many. We did have.
Restricted fund, though.
That, that's what I'm saying, there's no sense of us bringing this up, we need to sort them out, so we don't have to look at them, you know, so we can't touch them.
Well, we gotta see them, but it'd be nice, I see what you're saying, I mean, this, this.
I mean, we can't, why waste time on a compliment?
I can reprint this with the proper dates across the top, but I can flag those.
Yeah, that makes sense, it makes sense.
Or something.
Flag them, yeah.
Hundred percent.
It's not so much, uh, can we take out of this fund to put, transfer to the general fund? But can you use some of this fund money within that department to pay for some of the things that they do so that we don't have to donate so much from the general fund?
Exactly right, so friend of the.
Kind of like, uh, I don't mean it to be smoke and mirrors, but we're writing checks to this fund, to this account out of the general fund, we may not have to write that whole amount because they have some in reserve. I'm looking at that road patrol, while we haven't had a deputy, we've had a deputy opening for two years now. So those wages are sitting in a fund balance. Hmm, we're gonna be looking at cars, or what, road patrol? So instead of writing a check out of the general fund, we should be, well, take that fund balance and pay for the, the share of the car.
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
But we had talked about this morning at the budget meeting when we got to, uh, sheriff, the sheriff and the undersheriff were there, and Tim had brought up the fact that if we did use that, we had that seventy-five thousand dollars and, um, not grant money, but.
USDA.
USDA, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That that remaining money to pay for the two Durangos, I think the total is one twenty-four, remaining amount should come out of the road patrol fund.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Was there a new car, somebody asked me, is there recently a new car purchased? Oh. Somebody did ask that, somebody asked me, uh, they did this week.
Well, they've asked for the two Durangos totaling a hundred and twenty-four some thousand, and we have seventy-five thousand dollars that would offset that in grants, and if we don't use that now, we're gonna lose it, right?
Right.
I think it's similar to what you're saying, uh, Tom did some upgrades, and I know the treasurer's office had kicked in, um, various departments kicked into that, I think, register of deeds, I, I don't remember the clerks, I think they did as well, but a bunch of I mean, that's kind of what you're saying, correct?
Yeah, yeah, well, registered deed automation fund pays for, uh, computers in that, that office, so there's no reason to take general fund money to pay for that. That's all I'm saying, and, and a lot of this stuff, I, do we still ride with this commentary, fund balance?
Yeah.
Uh, there's.
Just riding in there?
There's some in there, but it's not like we've seen in the past years, um, I don't, well, anything that's in there is eligible to move out to help offset.
Well, I'm looking at ten months worth of.
Yeah.
Gladwin bills right there.
Yeah, um.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
I guess.
Bill's about seventeen grand a month.
Why would that? I guess, would you? You mean that, be paying for that?
Yeah. Well, you can only, you can only spend commentary money on the w- welfare of the inmates. Well, making sure they're inside the cell is welfare, social.
I was just gonna go to the food, the food bills are.
Yeah, yeah, well, the food bill.
Housing.
I, I think we can talk about that when the, when, when they're present, too, maybe they can give us some insight, too, but.
But that's. Yeah, I mean, uh, what was the other one there? Well, I, I was talking with, uh, uh, Tim, when he brought it up. Well, I, I was talking with Tim when he brought it up. We set the, we set the rent rates at, at annex buildings for building department MSU and nine one one. What, seven years ago? And all them have healthy fund balances. But we should up the rent.
What is the rent?
It's a thousand dollars a month. Isn't it a thousand dollars a month? Yeah. And I mean, gee whiz, you can't rent. Office space in this town any place for a thousand dollars a month.
Well, I hope since that time, since we said it, we also did those renovations that they desperately needed.
Oh, yeah, we've done that. And we pay the bills. We pay the utilities, right?
Right. Any cost associated with that building, we're paying for it. We're in the budget.
There may be discussion.
That's cheap. That's cheap.
We'll talk more about this. I'd like to look at it closer and. Administrator slash controllers report.
A few things. First, to update you on the audit RFP. As of today, we actually have one proposal in already from a firm in Alpena. We've got three firms that have raised a number of questions. We did invite the firms who had questions to submit those. By tomorrow, and then by Monday, we will put the answers on our webpage and then direct email them as well to each of the firms that we know about. This is helpful. I mean, some of the questions are really good. There was one question about how many of our. Component units are included in the audit. And we have a couple. We have, for instance, the land bank, we do transit, we do. Which are not necessarily the case in some other counties. So it's good for the firms that are making proposals to know that. So they're not surprised. When they get partway in, that they'll give us an accurate proposal. I'm happy to report that our parks grant has been officially reauthorized. That was all finished with the state this week. The Parks Commission will have to get on their horse. They've got until March. To get these funds spent. I don't think they're going to give us another extension. So I expect some RFPs will be forthcoming. The window installation is, it's actually kind of impressive. They have been displaced for most of the last two days a little bit as they've been doing my office, but. They are very efficient putting these things in. They've. They scheduled it or not, but that rainstorm with the wind beating on that window, it did not leak. So that was all very good too. They did some of the finished work on the inside today. I know the outside, they've still got some. Some of that, I guess, is citing for novice anyway like me that they'll put up out there. But. If you want to take a look at it after the meeting and go down there, don't mind the displaced furniture and everything, but I'm pretty impressed watching this. And they, they really got this thing down and they expect to move right along. They figure for the next. Couple of months, they're going to be here doing this work, but it's, it's kind of nice to see it happening. It seems brighter. I think it's probably just an illusion because the window itself is a little bit smaller, but it's. Very noticeable. I think you'd be very happy that we decided to do that. Let's see, I did sit in on a webinar hosted by Senator Slot again this week about federal funding. And I'll just say this, be very concerned about transit. It does appear that there's going to be. Some reductions in those monies that come through the federal government. They pass through the state down to the locals. That's, that's one that she flagged. It's probably going to see the reduction. The other one was the FEMA dollars that we've seen for the last few years. Probably are not going to return. There will be some very specific projects. That maybe are, will have a special grant call for, but we won't see the. General allocations like we've seen in past years. So those are a couple of things to look forward to, I guess. Two more items. One, did send notice out this week for an employee delegate for the MERS conference, something that we're required to do each year. If we don't get any applicants, then we don't send anybody. But if we have more than one employee that would like to do that, then we have to have an election. We have that all queued up if it happens and you'll have a resolution at. Think your first round in August because we want to get in on the early bird rate if we do send anybody. So. Something to look forward to. And then one last thing you're going to have on your next agenda. Say yes, these short meetings are probably done for a while now, but we're going to have a closed session with our. Legal firm that's handling the Fox versus Ogama case. This is that. What's the proceeds? I'm drawing them. Right. Well, the attorneys do need to talk to the board about direction. I know Karen and I have some opinions about that direction as well that we'll share at that time, but that's going to be an important one. They are wanting to get this thing wrapped up, which would be kind of nice. It's been going on for what, six years? Be kind of nice to get that behind us. So that's nickel tour. You will see a written report by your next meeting. This. Time just didn't allow it for this particular one, but I do keep track of all that stuff. So you'll see that report. That's your next regular meeting in three weeks.
Questions for Tim.
It's Tim, a couple of weeks back, you know, we were brought to our attention about that emergency action plan. Fact that we had one of the works years ago and never got finished. I know you've had a few meetings on that. I stress the importance that we need to get that, get that done and make sure everybody's on the same page. Can you give me an update on that?
You might see that on your agenda at the next committee of the whole. We did meet myself, Danielle, Janice and Mike Bowers. Last week, and we pretty well filled in the blanks there. Mike had already gotten a plan roughed out a few years ago. It's a little more comprehensive because we were dealing with all buildings and the project we were working on came out of the security committee. We wanted to deal specifically with this building. And so that's going to be wrapped up. We did find a few weak areas that we're addressing. Thanks to the power outage last week. We came to the realization that it's kind of difficult to scan into the building with your card if there's no power. And no one knew where to find a key. Okay, I have one, but. They did find Chris eventually and they were able to unlock the door, but then that begged the question of what departments are going to do when they got in here and there's no power and they can't swipe in. Do they have keys? Some probably do, some I know don't. And I heard, heard about that immediately after that power outage. So. That's something we need to address. And you might have noticed. There aren't any smoke detectors or smoke alarms in this building at all. Well, Mike had sixty of them, so we're going to have smoke detectors in here. I don't think that's a smoke detector. So anyway, we'll have some of those installed too. Now, that's not as good as a hardwired system, but it'll certainly alert us if there's smoke in any of the rooms. It's also going to alert us when the batteries are getting low and that's going to annoy people, but I think that will be alleviated relatively quickly. So. Long-winded answer to Commissioner Wilson's question, but I, I'm looking forward to having that. If not, on the next committee of the whole, then the one after that, but we want to knock this thing out.
Mr. Scott. Any questions for Tim?
No.
Any questions, Commissioner Rick?
Just one comment. The nice thing about battery powered smoke alarms is the fact that when the power goes out, they will still work. So hardware sometimes is not all cracked up to be, unless there's a battery backup.
Item eleven, elected officials and department heads. Clerk?
I don't have anything.
Pressured?
Just to follow what Tim said on the Fox case, we do have a Zoom meeting with the attorneys on Monday to get our questions answered before they read the questions.
Any elected officials, department heads on the phone? Jeff?
Yes, I have Jared there today. And if he could go ahead and brief you on some of the grant requirements.
I wanted to see if you wanted to introduce him.
He doesn't want to introduce me.
Hi, introduce yourself, please, sir.
Yes, Jared Gill. I am the. The independent counselor and veteran service officer for the. For all of our veterans, of course, being my immediate supervisor. So I, I'd like to thank y'all for entertaining me here. So being my first meeting, if I miss any, any of the. Points, go ahead and feel free to correct me. But what we really want to bring your attention was our, our grant. For FY twenty-five, we were sure we lost about forty-three thousand dollars because we weren't able to get things. It was the first year we put in for the grant and with the back and forth between the state and then the way the committee meetings lined up, we were having a real difficult time. Hitting time hacks for them and we were sure because they, they told us that they weren't going to honor anything. We were sure with us about forty-three grand in a grant. Yesterday, Jeff came in laughing and told me they approved it. Which had me jumping through hoops because we were actually using FY twenty-six to make up for that shortfall. So I had to rewrite the whole grant today. That's why I'm standing here with you. So yes, Tim, my windows did leak and. And I was much like you, nose down. So the, the grant is in front of you. Really, the intent of this grant, the, the bottom line of this. Is to. Get awareness out there to the veterans of the county. I was here for three years before I even knew we had a veteran service office in this county. We don't have good visibility. We don't have good soliciting. That's what this grant is really aimed at doing is enabling Jeff and I. To kind of modernize our office. We have nineteen seventies FDR MO that are a little bit broken. Hand me down chairs from offices that did get remodeled. And we had a veteran walk in my office. He said, you guys can't even help yourselves. How are you going to help me? That really hurt. So one of the first things we did was look at the, the upgrading and modernizing our office to make it professional. The other big thing and the lion chair of everything is really getting the visibility of the office, the name. And that's done through outreach programs. I've been sitting at the libraries and Skidway and. And Prescott areas that are maybe a little less affluent there. Their veterans can't necessarily come to us, so we want to be able to come to them. Right now, we have desktop computers. So in the FY twenty-five grant, we, we, we went to laptops on that so that we can do mobile. And actually help veterans wherever that is not necessarily where we're at. So really, that's what this is all about. So I just wanted to bring this in and bring this to your attention because. Again, just like the last one, I have until the thirty-first. To the state. So really, we're here to ask for your signature, Ms. Davis.
We make a motion to approve this. I like that motion. Discussing. Thank you for being here. Thank you for explaining this.
Absolutely. If you have any questions afterwards, I am always available.
Any other questions, comments? Jenny David, yes. Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wilson.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Nice work.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate, I appreciate you giving everybody a copy of this. So I just scanned through it real quick and I'm. At the end of the grant itself shows what everything is.
Purpose, what's your intention?
The states get really strict on the way we do the. They gave us an example. The word swag was in their example and they kicked it back and told us we can't use the word swag.
I'll sign that when the meeting's over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials, department heads? Anybody on the phone? Vanish from the floor? Motion for adoption. Commissioners report, Commissioner Seabrook.
We had. Budget this morning. Charlie pretty much talked about that and filmed. We went over the basically the same documents that we're looking at that he handed out to us. You know, we had that discussion in regards to the fund balances and things. So. I, again, just congratulate all the department heads and elected officials for submitting. Budgets that are. Within our means. And I mean, I, I am very, very impressed with the fact that they submitted accurate and. Livable budgets, I guess we should say. Attended the airport meeting. The attendance at. The fly-in was. Judging from the amount of breakfast meals that were served was down from last year. By about a hundred and twenty people. They served about a hundred and twenty breakfast less than they served last year. The weather, I'm sure played a big factor into that as well as the fact that the city of Hush Ranch had their. Activities the same day. So that, I'm sure that was a couple of detractors there. But overall, it was a big success. We've got some federal grants on the horizon that they're looking at alter for. Lighting and some communication stuff. They're just not sure what's going to happen. Everybody's kind of holding their breath in regards to. What the federal government's going to do, how much funding is going to come down the line. I will bring this up right now. I don't know if Commissioner Scott's aware of it. Craig, did you happen to read your packet from the health department? Any chance that came today?
Came today?
Yes, you emailed it out. Anyway.
Nope, I didn't.
Health, health, well, we have not had her me and the package just came out this afternoon. Health department has a request. But it's going to come before the Board of Health. To approve requesting additional funding. From the member counties to the tune of ten percent. They have not had an increase since two thousand sixteen. They have not requested any additional appropriations for almost ten years. And they're going to request ten percent. Right now, there's a projected budget shortfall of ninety-four thousand fourteen dollars. And if they are granted the, their ten percent increase, they're going to be requesting. Each of the counties that are in the health department, they will still have a projected deficit of forty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. So it's not going to fund the entire deficit, but they do have a fund balance. Very clear about that. They do have a fund balance. So anyway, that's on the horizon. I attended Horton Township that Monday night. They have changed their meeting times. They've got a new treasurer. And Karen's office has been very helpful already. She said that she's reached out. She appreciates everything that you guys have done. And I told her. The dasher because you guys are more than happy to help. So not much going on in Horton. I missed Edwards because my wife had surgery that day. So that's my report.
Commissioner Mayhew?
No, I went to Clacken. And they said that the. City bought the school. Burbank, Rose Township, Covens Township have already paid their dues. Clacking was waiting for the supervisor to show up and they were going to. Get theirs paid. They said by twenty twenty-seven, they got to upgrade their election stuff to some kind of a scam deal. They're good till then. And that's pretty much it.
Commissioner Wilson.
Last week, we had, we had a transit meeting. You know, we, we know obviously the importance of, you know, our cost saving out there and efficiency. Obviously, after hearing news now with kind of pretty much guarantee loss of. A decrease in funding from the feds. You know, we really need to keep running a tight ship out there. Tony's working really hard. I mean, you guys have seen a lot of the data driven results and we've made some. Made some moves off of that data. But with that information, it really makes us that we just got to really keep working hard. Stay as lean as we can and we got to start working on marketing the transit a little bit more for our public to know the importance of it. Because I think without a millage, we could be looking at a real. Future of, you know, that transit. Going in a direction of a lot smaller services to our county and we don't want that. Our county is growing. So. It's going to be a real important topic. We got to keep working really hard out there. This past Monday, I was at the Northern Commissioner meeting, Ross Common. I actually attended that via Zoom. Always, always really important stuff going on and great networking. You guys always hear me say that, but. We got a report from Amy with. Mac, who Amy's been very instrumental for us with our opioid settlement committee. So that was really kind of neat, kind of see where some people are at, where some counties are at. Definitely makes. Me feel good where we're at in our position, where we're, you know, we're asking for RFPs now. A lot of counties are really behind the ball where. You know, we're, I think, are sitting in a pretty good position. But it was, it was neat to listen to Amy and see where the other counties are at. We had our, our open house last night. So the second open house for the Ogleman County Housing Alliance. I thought it was a really good success. We had a couple really good speakers there. We had some. Some residents of the county that are just interested in possibly trying to start an LLC and maybe get a few houses built. We had some developers and some contractors. It was a really good event. So I'm really glad that that went well and we're going to continue working hard at that. EDC, I was via Zoom this past Monday. You know, but a lot of things that you keep hearing me talk about from broadband to daycare. Uh, you know, but a lot of the things that you keep hearing me talk about from broadband to daycare, broadband, we know that we had the opportunity with that B grant. We're still waiting to, to find out what we're going to get here in Ogoma County. Uh, Rich Castle had some information, Rich with consumers on that. It doesn't look that terribly great again for us here in Ogoma County, but, uh. We don't have any exact direction yet, but I sure hope that. We're going to see some broadband in some of these areas that are really well needed, especially areas like out there at the airport. And, um, at the transit. Uh, let's see, just a couple more quick things, um, housing budget. Budget meeting, we pretty much went over all that already. Uh, again. It's great to see the consistency. We have that budget committee. Uh, you know, we've got a lot of really hardworking people there. Uh, we've stayed united for the most part, you know, we know a mission at hand and, uh. It is good to see the direction that we're finally heading here at the county. Uh, one, one more item I have that's more of a concern. I asked Tim to pull up hours. You know, we, we have a millage now that our county residents are paying for animal control services. You know, we were blindsided pretty hard a couple of weeks ago, finding out that our animal control officer is now taking a full-time position with Arnet County. Plus running the shelter. So I've asked him to, uh, look into for hours and we want to make sure that that service is staying just as it was before. And I'd like to know what hours our current animal control officer is now working. Because again, this is another millage on our county residents, spending their hard work and money, and we need to make sure that service is where it needs to be. Uh, that's all I got.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, my township, Bogomel Township changed the meeting date from off of Thursdays back to Wednesdays, so I was able to attend first time in quite a long time. We have four new board members on our board and. It's, uh, it's interesting watching them. Learn as they go along. Uh, the meetings are quite lengthy because there's a lot of discussion. And, uh, not a lot of, uh, action, uh, so, um. I was, I was unable to attend the airport meeting, so I missed out on that, but, uh. Uh, that's about all I got. I, I haven't been, yeah, and I. July is very tough on me. I was unable to hit the. Road commission meeting or the city of West Branch, so. Maybe in August I'll get, be able to hit more of them. That's all.
You good?
Yep.
Um, we had a personnel committee as well, meeting.
That's right, we did.
We did.
I had, I had it written down.
That was for non, it's for non-union employees. We made some suggestions, some comments. I think that's like the third rough draft. But, um, I did get, oh, is it fourth?
Fourth.
Forget, third or fourth, but we plan a reconvening here in about two or three weeks and, and just a few tweaks to it, but overall it's, it's. We're near the end, so we did meet for that. I also toured Commissioner, um, Serbrook took me over to the jail with the, I, I requested I hadn't been, I hadn't been over there since it closed, so I wanted to see. Oh, what, I wanted to see, um. I wanted to see it all and, and I did, so. I agree with some comments that have been made as far as putting that building to use. What an absolutely beautiful facility, um. I, I had been. Not through when inmates were in there, obviously, but, but Commissioner Serbrook actually took me through it all and, and I was stunned by how large it is. It's very clean. It's, it's very usable. It's, uh. For that to sit there the way that it is right now is, is, is a shame. So hopefully I, I agree, Commissioner Wiltsey, I know has brought it up numerous times, finding some use for that building, but after I took the time to, to go over there and, and take a tour. Definitely on board with that, that thought process because that, that building does not need to sit. It's, we got to find the use for it somewhere in the future. So also I took some time and went over to nine-on-one, sat with the employees for a little while, had some conversation with them, which was very interesting and I, I, and also the director spent some time with her. Learned some things. Um, only meeting I've really had since our previous one was Ogoma County Planning Commission. We had that meeting last evening. Those meeting changes, those meeting times have changed. They are now at six P M. Versus seven, which is very nice. Um, we, we approved a special use permit last night for a modular sized manufactured homes. Up on Row City, up on thirty-three, uh. Right, right before going into Row City. So you're going to see some modular homes going in there. I think there's actually already two that are there. They make it seven acres there. They did some excavating. They're making, they, they tore out a home. They moved a building. Um, that had been pretty much abandoned and, and it was quite old, so it's going to be, it's going to be made use and it's looking pretty good. So you'll see a manufactured home lot there. We did make some stipulations, uh, pending that approval. Also, there was a parcel out on, uh, Lake Ogoma. That way that we addressed last night. Ryan is addressing the food units, the food trucks. He was had quite a few complaints over Fourth of July, primarily it sounded up. Clear Lake, there's a little bit of a scuffled one on there with some food trucks. And then we also, the school was there, Row City, uh, they did sell that school. Two of them were there last night because they plan on having, um. Rentals in there, uh, the library in there, gymnasiums, a membership, that type of thing, some businesses in there. Schools are not zoned. Um, and looking at that, it's currently zoned, I believe agricultural. So we have to jump some, some hoops to try to get that changed because obviously you can't put businesses where something's labeled as agricultural. I did learn that last night, the schools don't have to be zoned. So they were unaware of that when they purchased this, uh, this facility. So it's nothing that's going to hinder this by any means. We just gotta, we gotta make some changes and, and figure this little hump out, so. Um, I think that was really it with me, so.
I forgot, just a couple.
Yes, sir.
Uh, EMS, we had a board meeting last week. Um, we've had a number of, uh, employees out there that have gotten injured, a lot of duty injured. We've got two coming back, which is huge. Been able to do a pretty good job of overturning, overtime's always a monster with EMS, but they've been doing a pretty good job of being able to hold that, uh, as low as possible. Uh, one thing I did ask for, uh, when I first served on that board, when I first became commissioner. Uh, the current director, assistant director and the executive assistant all had reviews and reviews that came from the team members. They don't have to put their name on them, they don't have to do anything. So I suggested that we do that again because we have a newer director, we do have a newer assistant director. So we're going to be working on actually through an email, an email style. They don't have to have, it doesn't show their sender or anything. They won't know who it is. Just to get a review back from our team members and, uh, their thoughts on our, you know, current leadership there. And then, um. One more, just one more thing, transit, um, we are expediting that assistant mechanic position. Um, something that we had brought up before here with you guys here at the board, you know, our mechanic, um, of a long time out there, Ray, uh, Shu.
Shu, Ray Shaper.
Uh, he will be retiring soon and, uh, we need to get someone in there. So, uh, we did have five applications that Tony was going to start to go through. And, uh, we're going to hopefully be expediting that soon. Of course, you guys will know about that if we make the hire.
Tim, what, just this, this came to my, when is the deadline for the RFPs for the audit? The deadline?
Um, date before the community hall meeting, uh, be about the sixth.
Okay, I also want to mention, I appreciate, I read through all the meeting minutes on the budget committee, transit, it was on there. There's some data on there. I appreciate, uh, again, seeing all of that information. So any general public comment? In the room, any general public comment on the phone? Yes, sir.
Uh, is the city going to take care of the school or come to us? Or rezoning? They come into the county?
They're coming to us.
Okay.
Yes, the county now, Ryan, Ryan is, um, on it, so.
And I didn't know the city took care of it.
No, they're coming to the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
My question.
Any general public comment on the phone? Motion to adjourn?
He's back.
Support, all in favor?
Hi.
Have a good night, everyone. Anyway, it's.
All right, Tim, you got some things for me to sign? I got to go over to the.
Bye.